Agenda. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. All say aye?
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried.
Who's second?
Gary.
Oh. Grab that out. Yep. This one out of there.
Do they need time to finish the old, or do they work it out and sign them?
I don't know if they vet them and sign them.
That one's fine.
Okay.
I'll have to pay a refund. Sit. We'll just start it. This is a busy year in the equalization office with the city of Phillip being reassessed and the town of Midland and the travel for the growth. There was uncertified, because until the down of boards, nothing's official, nine million, nine hundred and forty-five, eight hundred and twelve dollar value acres in the city of Phillip with 1,533,286 being booked. The new values are not complete until the boards are done, but that's kind of where we were sitting. Town of Midland was given a 10% increase on the 2019 values with the uncertified $629,000 increase. The new values have not been ran yet after board meetings until, like I said, I'm done entering everything, everything. And there was no growth in the town of Midland. The county sees some changes due to reassessment and growth was $3,261,639. And again, some of that would, once boards are done, you know, the overall value for the county will change. The town of Midland will have site visits from a bar, kind of six foot away, whatever, this summer. We'll hopefully be able to get all properties measured and then look at some of the platted land values and see if time allows to begin on town shifts.
If you're doing that from afar, are you gonna contact them to say if their wall's coming in or something's greatly amiss?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, there it is. I've already kind of done out a lot of the homes, so yeah, everybody who has, they'll get phone calls, they'll get contacted if they have anything to talk about, whatever. It's just gonna have to be kind of that honor system for right now until we know where we're at. As far as appeals this year, Dakota Mill and Green called me yesterday and said they were pulling up their appeals, but I did ask them to be on the elevator in Midland. I'm gonna write it down with my hand, that's why I got seven one. Parcel number 1470.
It would be on your real estate assessment, Dakota Mill Real Estate Assessment notice.
Would be the second one that showed that it's a Midland address.
Where's the Midland address, right at the start?
Yeah, it should be.
This ain't great one.
It's there behind it.
Oh, there it is. For the second one, you can tell.
This one here.
Okay.
You're gonna have to show it to me, Rose, please. It's in here somewhere.
It's this.
Oh, okay.
They appealed basically all the parcels, but the only one we're going to talk about is 1470 is where the main elevator sits. Last year, they had talked about also they pulled their appeals. This year, they appealed again. Well, when I went in and worked up that elevator and the structures that are currently there last year, there was a reduction in the value, but when I came into this year, I forgot to take it out of override, so it didn't reflect those value changes. So for parcel number 1470, legal description being tract eight in lot seven between railroad and highway number 14 in outskirts of Midland, I would recommend the land value increased to 6,617 to reflect other land.
Is that the second one on there, Rose?
It's...
1470 is that?
Yes, yes, yep. And then the structured value was at 657,538. There was a discrepancy last year in the size of one of the bins, and I would like to reduce that building value to 626,660, so it would decrease the value of $25,336 for that property.
What was the land again?
The land is at 6,617.
Is there some move to change that?
Is there a second?
All say aye.
Second's been made. Motion's been seconded, made. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign.
The second one?
I'm just a little bit slow on that, but you had your 1470?
Yeah, that's the second.
What did that change to?
The land went to $6,617 and the structure went to 626,660.
Okay.
Okay. The next one on your list was Boyd Fox. Parcel number 1468, 95,000 and 96,540. He was sent on appeal. He had something about, the property taxes had went up 18%. There was no improvements had been done for the increase, and I did call and visit with him. The only changes that's been made to this property, in 2019, they did a 10% increase on all non-A, and this year, there was a 10% increase to the land with the structure done and did not change. So if you've seen an increase, it was in his taxes, and I can't control that. I showed a .06%, .22%, .25% is all I showed for increase on his properties. I recommended no change this time.
So he has like three lots for him or something?
He's got three platted lots, yeah, just on the north side of Midland where you turn go towards Gary's house, the old Towski property.
Lot three, I'd lock for a dollar. And I'm paying $36 in tax.
Try wouldn't sell for a dollar?
I've been trying to sell the place, and I've gotten zero offer. Nobody even looked at it. Same exact price that I paid for it five years ago. There's supposed to be this pipeline coming through, and being taxed on what the value could be. Getting here, getting close. It's clear on the line, man. Look at the state of the cattle market right now. I doubt I'll even be able to pay taxes. Pretty much broke the market. You can't get the governor to do anything about price fixing there.
So would that be the second one, Rose? The $5,000 value? No?
No. I don't have any $5,000 value.
Oh, I see, that's...
Well, the house gone up $148.68.
That's his taxes he's filing.
What are the assessed values of each one of those?
Gee, I got a list of 18, 19, and 20 if you wanna see.
Yeah, please.
Just kind of where they've gone, what they've done. I guess I put three of them too, if everybody else wants to know what they are.
Yeah, right, that'd probably work better. Make notes on our home sheets?
Yep. So on property number 1468, which also has the owner occupied, in 2018, the land value was at $394. The house was at $89,948.
What was that again?
$394 for land, $89,948 for the house. In 2019, there was a 10% increase. Land went to 433. The house went to 98,943.
Say that again.
98,943.
Yeah.
Currently, the house is still at 98,943, and the land went to 490 due to the increase per land values. Beyond that 18 down, I guess I didn't run that off to see where the house had been before that. I'm thinking about in that 89,948 area for a few years at least. So that was a .06% increase on the total valuation on that one.
What'd you pay for it five years ago?
$227,000.
$227?
If I, my memory serves me correct, state law states we were taxed on the value of land produced, not what we sold.
This is non-A, C, platted lots, not an A in our culture.
Did you reassess that one just last year? So you don't know what that one?
Nope.
Overall, I'm paying $238 and change on the tax of last year.
Which would reflect whatever it was in 198, what was it, eight something?
I'm not sure what the levy and stuff is there in memory.
And this year, it's a 12%.
Is this in, this is outside the town of Midland, or is it inside?
It's outside.
Outside, so this isn't in Midland?
No.
Right, I thought, so this is A, or this is?
Non-A.
Non-A.
Called C because it's platted lots outside the city limits.
The old Towski place?
Yes.
So the increase you're talking about here is just on the land itself, not on the house?
That's all, yep, that's what increased. What he's discussing is his taxes.
So the raise in the land taxes, is that comparable with the rest of non-A?
All of Hocking County's non-A, went up 10% in land value.
Okay.
And then this year, we're also paying on 100%? Is that correct? And that's what makes the 18% go, look like it went up that as far as your taxes last year?
If you last five years, our market's been up and we go down, many of them will go to the top, so I don't see how we can keep moving back. I've been trying to sell the place, and I want to sell, so I'm, problems over there. The rate inflation should at least make the price more desirable than five years ago, because prices stayed low.
So on these things here, how does it affect our ratio sales, when the sales were like 227 and it's assessed at 90,800?
Well, he bought all three lots. The total value is 142,297.
142,97?
And he paid 200 and whatever for it, so he paid well above market value. Yeah, I mean, technically, it is what you're willing to pay for it, so.
Right.
But it would show that we were undervalued.
So on, doc or sales?
Before you buy, you have to have a appraisal. The appraisal is high, you can't go up long enough, so the appraisal has to come in at the same price as the actual value.
It's one of those that, if I reassess as part of my plan around Midland this year, then I can make a valuation change if I get there, but at this time, I, you know, until that's worked into the plan, I can't lower people's values just because they're...
No, and it's kind of hard to explain too, because I think, once everything gets reassessed, all the other houses that will come up will actually lower the ones that are paying the higher end of it, because, because there's no more tax money being accepted, you know, because everybody's got a tax base. It's just gonna get divided differently because of the values of, everything gets divided equally. I'm not the best one to explain it, but...
The piece of pie.
Yes.
That litter for me.
The amount of money that still is collected for taxes is still the same. It just gets dividedly different when everything gets assessed out accordingly where they need to be.
This is providing increase in one year.
The 18%?
Yeah.
Okay, due to the bad sales, and you're looking at the last year's taxes, I think, so the reason it went up is because we had a lot of sales that were, a lot of these $30,000 houses were selling for 50,000 or 60,000. So it throws our ratio off, and then the state comes in and says, hey, you ratios can't be off like that, and then they say you have to charge 100% because you're not where you're supposed to be on your tax base.
Yeah, well, they're still sitting on all the houses too, because the pipelines are meeting the house lots sold.
Right, which, that's not our fault either.
Well, it's not here, so you can't measure it.
With the speculation.
Yeah, it's pure speculation.
I'm buying for the pipelines.
Yes.
No.
And the houses in Phillip that have sold haven't been through the pipelines, I mean...
No.
It's people looking for houses.
And speculation on the pipeline, yeah, and you took yard and shop, you had it equipped, and access to the highway or anything. It should, I mean, it's prime spot for that exact thing in the house. He fit, he's got six bedrooms, so he...
Minus it's in Midland.
Yeah. Outside of Midland.
Right, oh, I mean, it's, you know, you know what I'm saying, the location's tough spot too.
Yeah, I mean, there's ranch houses, but, you know, up on the bridge there, that was scheduled to be rented, and people had to move out of them, and then they never come along. I don't know what they're gonna paper in, but it's ridiculous.
It's kind of like years ago when the organization bought all the land in the town of Cottonwood, thinking their railroad was gonna be doing something big, so they bought all these lots, hoping to be able to resell them, you know, and it just didn't happen. Something changed in the railroad, whether they were gonna build that extra spur there or whatever, it just didn't happen, but they were thinking ahead, working on it.
Definitely, I know the people, yeah.
But that's why, you know, we're going to, and they're how many, so many parts of it, so. Chance you take, but for this, I'm saying that I don't think there's any change at this time.
I guess I feel the assessment value that's over here, use, look at the assessment values, and the assessment value looks like it's probably pretty close to being right. So I'd motion leave it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to leave. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried.
Well, Britney's here, should we do her? And then, is that all right, or do you wanna just continue on now?
Sure.
How do we do it, Paul?
Sure.
You know, we'll find it.
No, that's a blowout. Thank you.
Rose, as far as I know, like, way you can still field this to the state, right?
Yeah, if you don't agree with what we did, yeah, so you can still take it to OHC.
Yeah, officer hearing.
Take it to who?
Officer hearing examiner?
State examiner?
Yeah.
Um, I don't remember, I think we did, 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 do we close by the 27?
I don't remember either.
What's the deadline?
That's what I'm trying to remember. I have it up in my office.
Yeah, they're able to come down. Yeah, I think it's like two weeks.
I've had a book.
Can you just contact me with that?
Sure, I can, yep, plus, yep, you just can add it in.
Says, a letter must be written to the chief administrative law judge. This letter must be mailed or received by May 15.
I've got more books in my office, so if you wanna give me that one.
Yeah, do you want this one?
Yeah.
It should have the address.
If there's address, then you can call me and I'll give it to you.
Thank you.
That's all you need to do?
Yep. Okay, jump around. Now we're going into tax exempt parcels.
Oh, Britney's here, does it matter or not?
She is tax exempt parcels, yep. Go to golf, and then we'll go back, and then we'll go back.
Okay.
And it came down to is I assessed the golf course this year and sent them assessments, which is what I'm supposed to do, and then they send in a letter, or they fill out the paperwork for the tax exempt. Due to mailing issues, I guess nobody got it.
Good.
So they turned, yeah, I think they turned one in late, just here a couple months ago, whatever. And that's all it is, is basically it's my job to go out, find it, list it, give a value to it, and then bring it to you guys, and whatever as far as the, whether it's exempt or not exempt. I did a lot of research on it. I cannot find many golf courses that are owned by organizations that are exempt, but theirs, they lease back to the city, who rents it back to them and whatever, they have a paper trail, so I'm assuming we just need to call it exempt and call it in.
Any more discussion?
What's the value on it now, the assessed value?
Oh, I don't think I brought it with me, Steve, actually. I'm gonna say the, around that 350,000 by the time you add like, I think 38,000 something for the land and that 300 and something for the buildings.
Your assessment sheet?
29,000.
Your assessment sheet is in your packet, I believe.
And then 306,000, I think, is what it says.
336,000.
470?
Backside on the line?
That one?
336.
Small.
Second, last page.
Yeah, it's getting into the darker stuff.
Before, like, the paperwork she showed me, they were only claiming like $817 for land value, which, there it is, that was way back when it was ag land, and so, like I said, the golf course itself had never been assessed, it had never been built in, and in order to do this, should something happen or whatever, they need to be within the system so that for insurance purposes or whatever, so.
Good.
But I have to, yes, send that stuff out at full and true, and then they do the exempt forms, and then we go from there, so.
You, so how all this work? I mean, who owns, who owns the land? The city?
No, the golf course association.
Golf course association.
But they lease it to the city, who rents it back to the city.
And in agreement with the city, that's how we provide a golf program to the school.
Yeah.
So that makes us a development organization, and then we're also 501(c)(1).
So you don't charge the kids at school anything?
If they come out during the golf program, no. No, it is provided free of charge.
During golf season?
Most schools have to pay golf courses for their golf programs, we help, but this is what's helped keep our youth golfing, so, and we wanna continue to provide that. We don't wanna have to charge the school to provide that program, and then they're gonna turn around and tax the rest of us for that.
Right.
So, it works good over here.
And if we, so you just will be able to relate to the taxes?
Well, it all falls in my other tax exempt properties, is when I present them to you, then yes, you guys make a motion to agree that they are tax exempt, so.
Yes, and it also includes the cart shed that's on the north side of the road that is actually on...
County property.
City and county property.
And I don't know cities or areas we do anything else for.
If you have any kind of lease?
Do you have a lease?
The city has a lease agreement, I think, for that.
I'll make a motion that they, if you could give us, along with the other taxes, yeah.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Motion's been made and seconded to exempt the golf course. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you. Thanks for messing around your schedule of parking.
See you later.
Put it back, or...
Um, we should be at Doug's back.
Number three, so.
Yeah, I got him.
You got him?
I tried to sort them out, but they clicked them.
It should be one stapled together, like three or four pages.
Yeah, I tried, I tried them all started, but then Henry linked off, he's, they got mixed up again.
So on the first one for Doug and Joanne West is parcel number 10327. I did find an actual sale for these. At the time, he purchased seven parcels of land for a total of 11.9 acres over $10,000.
He purchased that for what?
$10,000 for all the seven lots that up there, just north of the cemetery, Peter Hanson had platted a bunch of lots or whatever.
How many were put there?
Well, as far as the valuation, when he purchased those in 2018, this particular one started out with a value of, because it had to be split from another parcel, and it was valued at $10,000. Since then, it's taken the two 10% increases in the last couple of years, and the other lots are kind of the same. They took the 10% increase, valuation, whatever. Since then, it's taken the two ten percent increases in the last couple of years, and, um, the other lots are kind of the same. They took the ten percent increase, valuation, whatever, um. But in looking at the sale, like I said, it averages out, it should be at about eight hundred and forty dollars an acre on the seven lots, is kind of how it worked out for the total acres. So, on Doug's, I, and he only appealed part of the, um, parcels, but parcel number one oh three two seven, um, I would recommend reducing from twelve thousand one hundred dollars to fifty-five forty-four, which would put it in that eight hundred and forty an acre, according to what he paid for the land.
Twelve thousand, what it was?
It was at twelve thousand one hundred.
And you're gonna want to reduce it to what?
Fifty-five forty-four. If you divide the total of what he paid for it into those seven lots, which make eleven point nine acres, that comes out to, it should be at eight hundred and forty dollars an acre. So this first lot is six point six acres.
Okay.
So it's gonna have the most value. Parcel, the second one on that sheet is parcel number, I'm not sure, four oh four. And it was valued at eleven hundred and eight dollars, eleven hundred and eight dollars, and I would recommend reducing it to five hundred and eighty-eight.
Can we read those figures?
It is, not in here, but it's under an acre, it's like a point.
You want the figures, eleven oh eight?
It was valued at eleven hundred and eight dollars.
Okay.
And I would like to reduce it to five hundred and eighty-eight. Parcel number.
That's like less than an acre.
It is, yes.
It's just pasture.
Yep, well, they're, they're pasture, but yet then they're platted lots.
Yeah.
So they should reflect the, um.
Same, they're all platted.
Yeah.
So I should raise the value, wouldn't it?
Right, these aren't nowhere near, um, these are like higher than average ag lots. I mean, if I move it as per acre for ag, we'd be talking seventy-five, four hundred and fifty dollars, so. Being platted in where he curves, or, or somebody can still, there's still like six more there if somebody wanted to, or whatever. Um, parcel number four oh five, there again, is at eleven oh eight, um, I would like it reduced to eight hundred and forty, it is an acre.
Say that again.
Eleven oh eight to eight forty.
What was your number? The very first one, what, what, uh, lot, four?
Four oh five.
Four oh five.
How does this, to dumb it down, we're talking the same thing, how does this equate to then what Mr. Fox was saying about his land?
Mr. Fox is, um, discussing his taxes.
Oh, not, not the land, the taxes. Yeah.
I don't pay the taxes, so I don't.
No, no. I, I just thought it was arriving at a price for the land.
And it is, it's saying that the platted lots outside the city limits in that area average about eight hundred and forty dollars an acre, is where it goes, and I, I, I'm working on that, and I've come all the way from laying there in and around full of, and just to kind of see.
There was clarification, not, you know, I didn't.
Yep, and then parcel four oh six was also valued at eleven hundred and eight dollars, and that one I would like to reduce to four hundred and fifty-six dollars.
You gotta say that again.
Number four oh six, eleven oh eight to seven fifty-six. The parcels he didn't appeal, I will go ahead and, and change that in my visual working file to reflect the same stuff for me. Um, and then his last one was parcel number four twenty-three, and that is, um, out here, like, when you go up the, like, in Kennedy's lot where he always keeps his half horses. It's from kind of that area, this is outside the city limits, and it goes up to like Glenn O'Connell's shop. Well, the value increase is due to the fact, a brand new pole building, a brand new open lean-to on the back of that pole building that just got put on this year. So that's why there was the increase, and due to the reassessment and the growth because of that change, I'm saying that I feel the value is where it should be.
On four twenty-three.
Yes, I recommend no change for it.
So how do you, how do you get to, like, this, say, seven four oh five, how do you get to the fact that Glenn, how do you get from the, how do you figure out how much it's actually worth, like, the lots?
Based on the lot sales, based on any lots outside of the city of Philip or Midland that are selling, um, average lots within the city of Philip are selling between, um, ten thousand and twenty-five thousand for a normal sized, um, you know, half acre or two.
And outside the city limits, I mean, these vary, does it vary?
They're, but they're different sizes.
Okay.
So it's all the eight hundred and forty an acre taken into the size of the lot.
So if it was a full acre, it's eight forty.
Right, so then some of them are just barely under, or over half, some are just barely under an acre, so.
So, on this, you go off the actual sales, right, to, to arrive at this?
I'm assuming that's, like I said, it increased in two thousand eighteen to the automatic ten thousand dollars when it got split, and that's exactly what he paid for the seven lots or whatever, so. But only one lot changed, so I would, like I said, in trying to straighten it out, this is where I'm saying I'm okay with going.
Um, no, it's over my paper. Trying to get the input. So as we address these, is it each one, or do, uh?
They are all separate appeals, so I would assume you'd have to do it according to the parcel numbers. So parcel.
Four oh six. That may be easier for us.
Is there more discussion? Can you grab that? Not here, don't you, do you entertain a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve your changes to lot number seventy-four oh six to seven fifty-six.
Two second. Motion second's been made. Four oh six.
Four oh six. Okay.
All, all in favor, what's that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign.
Who will be second? Mike?
Mike seconded it?
I don't know what your order is, so.
I have four oh five on that too, right?
Yep.
Yeah. I want a motion to change number four oh five. What's it gonna go to, what?
It's gonna go from eleven oh eight to eight forty?
Correct.
I'll make a motion for that one.
Two second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to change four oh five. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried. It's that four oh four would be next. I don't have that sheet in front of me.
Uh, what was that one that's going through?
It reduces from eleven oh eight to five eighty-eight.
That was because it was a small lot.
It's smaller, yep.
Oh, wait that.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried. One oh three?
One oh three forty-seven?
Yep. Fifty-five forty-four.
From?
From twelve thousand one hundred.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion on that one.
Two second.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to reduce one oh three twenty-seven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, the motion carries. You probably better address four twenty-three too.
No, I make a motion with the three.
There you go.
No change?
No change.
That's all with all the, all the, whatever.
Yep.
Do we second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to leave four twenty-three as is. All in favor say aye. Hold same sign.
Who is that?
But it's just a very good one, I think. Roger Dale, number, um, parcel number twenty-five forty-five should be like right under the.
There we go. That's your power?
Well, yeah, sort of, kind of, whatever. There's a second house in his yard. When I was out there for growth, in order to add my growth to my new buildings, I basically had it built in, his whole place. I built it out of a house. But I really didn't have a lot of history, everything that was in the property car, so, basically what they appealed was the valuation of five thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars, and, um, what he and I discussed was, I changed it from technically a house, because there's no services coming in anymore, to a shed, ladies and personal storage, which reduced the value to five hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Oh, wait that.
That's what I would recommend there.
Oh, that, that's the only change on any of his?
Yes, the rest of it, he pulled all of his appeals.
What was the number changed to five?
Five fifty-four.
Five fifty-four.
For that, for that whole house.
So what was the first valuation on that?
The original valuation was five thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Five thousand seven hundred and fifty-three?
And you went to five?
It went to five hundred and fifty-four.
Yeah, did you get that I made the motion and he seconded it?
No, I didn't.
Guess, uh, motion's been made and seconded, dropping to Mr. Dale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carries. Uh-huh.
Um, Patty Rhodes, the written letter.
Okay.
Patty called me and we talked about her valuation, whatever, and then I told her to, um, do a written appeal, since she lives out of state, which she did. Her and I went through, talked about her house, she explained some things to me, and I agreed to reduce her valuation, um, I'm gonna say the land stayed the same at five thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and the structure value changed to thirty-three thousand seven thirty-nine. For a total valuation of thirty-four thousand fifty-two dollars.
So what was the house?
Thirty-three seven thirty-nine. The other part was, is I discussed, um, also removing her owner occupied, since she does no longer live in the state. So, I totally got looped. Something that has, you have to live here at least six months or so many days out of the year to receive owner occupied.
What does that affect?
Look, it has changed, it hasn't changed yet, obviously.
No.
Why is that?
Because I'm, just talked to her about doing it. I mean, I can go away and change it, but I still have to notify her it's gonna happen.
But she's been rented for over a year, couple of years, yes.
I guess I didn't know she rented it.
Yeah, she hasn't been here for a couple of years, I think.
I'm sorry, what sentence?
So, yeah, she should.
Her owner occupied, I had to.
She should be, it should be listed as a rental.
Yes, I removed the owner occupied from her house, since she no longer lives here.
Okay, yeah, I got that.
But I had to notify her of that, and I had to.
What does that change?
It gives you a reduction when you go to pay your taxes. I always thought it was around ten percent. She thought it was thirty percent, but I don't think it's that much.
Yeah.
I think it's like ten.
And, uh, and that's, yeah, that is about. And this evaluation?
Yes.
You could get that?
Yep. Yeah, the, the owner occupied stuff doesn't come off till taxes.
Yeah, it doesn't change the assessment value.
No.
No, it just changes your taxes.
What's the, what's that, what, 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 what?
Um, like twenty thousand?
I heard all of one oh five.
Well, until I get to it, they didn't. That's why I'm getting the ten percent increases, because, you know, he's not likely to buy these fifty percent.
But you're changing this one already.
No, I love it.
You dropped the, that was a five thousand.
I live in on five thousand six hundred and eighty-seven, just like she was.
That's what it was previously, though.
Yeah. Yep.
The houses is worth that much more than the fifty thousand?
Yep. Then that's what I told her, is when you have no access to them, I would have assumed that she'd done some remodeling inside, she'd redone some stuff. She states, no, I have to take her report.
So that's what we talked about, was the size of stuff and whatever, but now I get the change in land value, all I changed was the structure value.
That's a small lot anyway.
It is, but the, and the house decided sold for like twenty-five thousand, probably in, not as, you know, versus probably in a lot better shape than that, but it still could be a comparable.
Right.
Do we want to entertain a motion?
Rose, let me, you said, uh, you had lowered the assessment to thirty-nine, she's got down thirty-nine four twenty-six, and you said thirty-nine.
I think she put that with the.
So you both agree on?
She requested.
If you add the thirty-three seven thirty-nine and the fifty-six eighty-seven, it's, it comes out to that thirty-nine four twenty-six, yes.
And you, you put it down at thirty-nine oh fifty-two?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Oh, I, yeah, because, yes, that's what she, yeah, that's what she wrote on here, but I don't remember. When I went back in, there was something else we did, and so, yes, I'm saying thirty-nine seven thirty-nine should be the house.
Oh, thirty-nine.
The house?
Thirty-three seven thirty-nine, now I'm gonna get dyslexic, girl.
Thirty-three seven thirty-nine.
Her last year's value, I'm sorry, was the thirty-four oh fifty-two. I wasn't reading her writing very well.
Okay, well, I'm, okay, so you have that plus the five thousand?
I have the thirty-three seven thirty-nine plus the five thousand six hundred and eighty-seven.
So it would be thirty-eight plus the thirty-nine?
No, it'd be the thirty-three.
Thirty-nine.
Okay. I thought you said thirty-nine oh fifty-two.
Yeah, I did, because I was looking at her thirty-four oh fifty-two.
Yeah.
But that was, yep.
So, so that's what it is, actually, thirty-nine four twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay. I'd motion approve that one. Change.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries. Brady?
Okay, I don't think he got handed out to everybody.
Uh, I got one.
You have one? Okay, then I have extras.
Next one is Brady Penny, parcel number one oh three oh seven. He called me about his mobile home that is in the trailer park. And there again, I went down, revisited the site and there was a deck added to the home that was, is actually portable, it's sitting on concrete, or you know, blocks or whatever. So it can be moved. As far as the lead to on it, he has no idea, other than it was built after the home come here. But like I showed him, the only thing on his property card is a drawing of the house, a drawing of a deck, and a value of the deck. That's all I had to go by. So when I built his house in, that is now a lead to or an addition. But I don't know who built it, I don't know why it was. So that's what we talked about, since I did not know the contractor, who did the work, whatever. We did obsolescence for that. This is a, what you'd call a park model mobile home. It was moved to fill up somewhere in, sometime in two thousand sixteen. It was purchased for thirteen thousand seventy five dollars. Like I said, the property card just showed a four hundred dollar deck. Otherwise, there was no other evaluations. And it appeared in two thousand sixteen, it was a, there was a wood deck that is now the lead to or the addition, from what I can, when I went to the house, took pictures and whatever. Yes, there is a, there again, I don't know if they use it as a porch or an addition. He uses it as a rental house, so I don't know who rents it or how to contact them. Anyway, the home was valued at total for forty two, four seventeen and due to the changes, the condition, the deck and the other things, he agreed to reducing the value to eighteen thousand, seven hundred and forty three dollars.
That's a move.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Did Michael Gary make a motion? I couldn't tell. Did you make a motion or?
I think you did.
No, I mean second, I'm sorry.
As she's talking, when you're done writing, I'm going to talk you out of my pills.
How many, did I give you part of Doug Maddox's one?
I have, yes, I didn't make a copy of it.
Yeah, and I don't think I put it on the list.
No, it wasn't on, it was on the, not on the left, so I didn't think it was.
I have one, I guess that we missed, it was a letter from Doug Maddox of Midland. There again, the address change that I wasn't aware of, so his assessment got to him later. Because he lives outside of the county and he had to appeal to this board. But his one in Midland was changed or reduced back in two thousand nineteen with a ten percent increase at the Midland boards. So as far as here, I would recommend no change in order to not mess with what Midland boards did.
Can I ask, what, what kind of value does it have, do you?
You know, and like I said, I missed you, so I brought it with me. I really couldn't tell you offhand unless I went upstairs and looked.
He's, he made an appeal to because he was concerned about the values of it.
Who's this one?
He doesn't believe there is evidence...
What's her name?
Maddox?
Kind that is proof of something kind, I don't know, maybe he can read his writing.
So he doesn't live there?
No, they live here and that's why he looks so long for him to get stuff. Because nobody gave us the address change.
Writing is hard to read.
Yeah.
I'll see if we can test this.
But like I said, at the town of Midland, four days, they did reduce it back to the two thousand nineteen with the ten percent increase, so... And I missed him, so that's why I don't have anything with me. Did you get it?
Little bit, somewhat.
Want to try?
No.
Anyway. Gee, he hasn't lived there, he said, for almost two years. And it would need to, so like I said, I would just, until I go back to Midland this year, I guess I can't say for sure.
Would you want to leave it while we, the city of Midland, like that?
Yes.
That's a move to do that.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded to leave as is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries.
You got it?
I do.
Okay. You hit the phone, did you?
Yep. I didn't know if you wanted to wait for my turn or we go ahead. Um, there again, because Mr. Form lives outside of the county, his appeal could be heard, or had to be heard or should have been heard at the county boards. But the Midland, the city of Midland or town, whatever, Midland did take action on his property. And again, they reduced his values to the two thousand nineteen with the ten percent increase. And so there again, I would say that's where I believe it should be for this year and it will be looked at again this summer. Quite a few of these are like older mobile homes that just kind of sit in a town.
But he's out of town?
He lives out of town, I believe he rents it.
But it's in town now.
I believe he rents it.
Yeah.
Who's this?
Derek. Because they said there's someone living in it currently. So that would be one, I would say that because the town of Midland took action on it, that I would just assume leave it with their.
Then pick it up when you get everybody else.
Yes.
That's a move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Hold same sign, motion carries.
The next one I have is Jordan Young. And I actually appealed this one to the county from the Midland boards.
Is that it?
I did this with Mr. Young about it. When they did the two thousand nineteen with the ten percent increase, this is an old garage that sits across from his house or behind his house. I had reassessed it and I had offered a stipulation on it once I inspected the garage. And the town of Midland agreed to go with my stipulation value, except for they forgot to add the land value into that. So that's what I'm requesting is to stay with that stipulation value. Five thousand one hundred and eighty four for the garage and the land value of nine hundred and seventy nine dollars.
So it lowered by over half? Am I reading this wrong?
Well, the actual stipulation was lower than what the value was, yes. Yep.
I guess I'll make a motion to change it to five thousand one hundred and eighty four, ninety seven.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries.
As long as we're talking about Mr. Young, I'm sorry, then I would also like to add owner occupied to this building in this house. I guess he's in the owner occupied, we can relate to that too. We can do it in the next thing.
Yeah, that's probably.
Yeah, I'll do it in the current thing.
We get a groupie?
Yeah. The next thing I have is basically an office there. Tina Slavik came in and asked me, how come she now owns a hundred and sixty acres? I told her I had no idea, but she said if somebody wanted to give it to her, she should take it. And when I went back and looked, it was a two thousand eighteen sale. Actually, KAG LLC, which is Steve McDonald, bought two parcels of land over on the western side of the county. And somehow one of the parcels got put in Tina Slavik's name. Don't ask me how, but I would like permission to add parcel four one nine oh back to KAG LLC.
They aren't legal owners?
Yes.
That's all clear.
Second?
Yes, Steve laughed and said, I knew I was missing something.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries.
Okay, I have, um, some of these appeals went to the town of Midland. Basically to do class changes and owner occupied changes. According to what they were told, it all has to be known at county boards. So that's kind of what we call office cleanup that I have. I have Or Jensen Jensen LLC. They purchased a bank a couple of years ago. I think two thousand seventeen maybe. But they would like this bank, right now it's classed as non-ADC, that says on the main street in Midland. They would like it reclassified as non-AD or residential property. It still has the safe inside, it still has the ninety deposit box, it's still, you know, they had some roof issues. Gary talked to Jensen's and said that there's still a little issue with the roof, leak in, whatever. But they did put a new roof on it in two thousand thirteen and fourteen, right in there? To try to stop that issue. The hard part was switching some of these to like a non-AD is the fact that, where it still has the safe, it still has the ninety deposit box. Sometime, they could change it back to a bank if they wanted to. So, and there's really no difference in taxes between a commercial and a residential. But then again, it comes down to what the board recommends is what I'll do.
Well, it's still a commercial building, that's why.
That's...
And nobody's living there.
No, they're using it as a store.
So what's the value difference between commercial and residential? Hundred dollars or a year?
The value, I don't think there's a difference, it's the levy that's applied to it, yeah, and that I...
The levy is a little different though, right? Is the levy just a hair higher than?
I thought they were the same.
Then maybe they are the same. I thought it might have been a little more.
So would it be to turn it into a house or a business?
No, they're going to just use it for storage. They'll use it for storage and then on this, whatever, it sounds like it's for personal property. You know, where they, they have it under their LLC, so I didn't know, maybe they were storing stuff for their store, which would make a difference, you know.
As far as the value goes, it goes along with the rest of the Midland, this is...
This is great, yeah, yeah. But I mean, there again, it's a commercial building, so I haven't been there, haven't looked at it, haven't done anything with it. What they want is, they want the value or the class changed to residential rather than commercial, is what they're talking about.
Why? Is it the tax things?
There, yeah.
There's no change. Why would you change it?
I don't know, I was, I was told back in, when I first started, that usually buildings like that that are commercial, you don't change because they can always revert back to what they were. Because like in yoga, we had a lady buy a hair salon, was living in it. Now she's moved out into another apartment and that's reverted back to a hair salon. So, you know, why do you change the class?
I think it's just that, I think you should just wait and maybe, until you can re-qualify, reassess it for summer and then and then go over there, maybe might as well. I'll do that, yeah, I want to.
There is a motion and my second?
Okay. To deny, two seconds?
Yes, to deny. Motion's been made and seconded to deny. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries.
The second one I have is the old elevator that sits in the middle of the town of Midland. There again, they want a class change, they want it reclassified as a residential garage.
Residential garage? Is there a house set next to it?
No, but he uses it to park his extra vehicles in. To me though, yeah, it's kind of hard to make an elevator look like a garage or, you know.
Well, the elevator is a bit of a red spot, so maybe a red car is a little spot. So it's a commercial. I don't see where a big residential would... I think he just uses it for his own vehicles, but you would your garage.
And then, there again, it's only what I looked, twenty two to twenty five hundred dollars is all the value is on it. It's not valued that high.
So you're very biased, I suggest we do the same thing with fourteen dollars. We did with the van, yeah.
Okay.
All seconded up.
Rose? Motion? Motion? Motion's been made and seconded to deny. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion.
Well, it looks like this is going to start changing, one, if you need change model.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, there again, all this...
It isn't that high a value.
There is, the other one I had was James and Jessica Rip. They, there was a commercial building, whatever, in the, on the main street that was tore down. But they now have their double Y and their personal garage on that land and it's still classified as commercial. That one I would like to change to non-DS. I would like to add... I would like to add owner occupied because they currently don't get that. She has to fill out the paperwork for me for the coming year, but.
Motion's been made in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries.
I lost track of who seconded it, I'm sorry.
I did too.
Steve, okay.
Yeah.
So then I have for owner occupied changes, this is people who live in Midland, Hillip, whatever, that have never had it. Or not for a long time. I would like to recommend owner occupied be given to Anthony Ellis, Ralph Gevis, Kerry Rogers, Mark J. Nelson, Tony Beesel, George Young, and Billy Dewill. And they've all given the applications for it.
They, their houses that they've never had owner occupied?
Yep.
Is Mark living in that one or is it still empty?
He lives out of his dad's, doesn't he? Or in his mom and dad's place.
So this one isn't owner occupied?
That's the only house he has.
Did it get sold?
His mom's house, his mom's house does.
Oh, his mom's? Yeah, I know those.
His house off the country didn't have owner occupied? Did his dad have? Did his dad have owner occupied?
Probably when they lived out there. But once they moved to town, I'm assuming it got taken off and after that moved out, it was never put back on. Or once he started buying it, whatever.
So that's the move, changing those that owner occupied?
Was that Tony Beesel?
Yep.
They have a lot in Midland?
Yes. Actual house. That's where he lives.
What was, what was Ralph's before?
Ralph's was non-owner occupied.
Does he actually live here?
Well, I think he's been here for a couple of years.
Okay.
From what I can find.
How does he own it?
It just never was owner occupied?
Nope.
Same do have it.
Well, I'll second the motion that they made.
Oh.
Thank you.
Motion's been made in second to accept A through G, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries.
Okay.
Did we do H, Patty?
Yes, we did Patty when we did her.
When they did her.
For as far as the tax freeze, I had actually fourteen people apply this year, fourteen people were approved. The land value was reduced from twenty-nine thousand nine hundred to twenty-six thousand one forty-five. The total building, the buildings were reduced from four hundred and twenty-two, seven ninety-five to a hundred and eighty-three, eight oh nine. And those all reflect from the year nineteen ninety-three to two thousand sixteen. Land reduction was a total of three thousand seven fifty-five and building reduction was a total of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine oh five. I had one person that applied for the disabled vet, she was told that she was too late to file. She does qualify for the hundred percent disability. I had an email from Amherst Ninety with the Department of Revenue. She said the board can choose to do this two-way. We technically can't deny her application. The board can choose to accept it with the late filing and give the exception and let her use it for this current year. Or you can deny it and when tax bills comes out, she can then ask for an abatement. Where she qualifies for a hundred percent, her value goes from fifty thousand three eighty-six to zero. Option A, she said, is clearer and easier for all involved, but option B is technically the most appropriate process. We can choose to do it either way. And then once she gets this, then she has it as long as she lives on, in that house or whatever.
What was the name?
I can't give out names, sir.
Oh, yeah, no.
Guess I'd better be done with it today and not have to worry about it for the abatement part. So with that, I'd so move everybody else's. What I would come up with?
Aye, second.
Motion's been made in second to do the freezing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries.
That included the freezes?
What's that?
That included the freezes? Or you don't have to do anything with that? Tax freeze valuation changes?
Technically, no, I just reported to you that's where it's at. Some of those, you know, it's, yeah, there was a few changes on some of them as far as what year they actually applied, but otherwise. The other stuff I have for you was some of the exempt properties. And I've been trying to search them and it's probably gonna end up just an ongoing search. Like one of them that I'm questioning or whatever is the, or like what you call, is Grinstone Hall. I've talked to the people that live out there. They said that when Judd Fennell's family in there, they at one time owned that land or the whatever. And she said that when he passed away, the family offered the hall if they would fix it up, if the community would keep it up. And the community told them at that time there was nobody interested in doing that. So I sent a letter, I got information from Ken Miss, because he handled that estate. And I sent a letter to one of the family members, but I never did hear nothing back. So technically, Grinstone Hall needs to go on back on the tax roll. I don't know if I should put it in Fennell's name or just leave it Grinstone Hall with value and let it end up going for taxes and the county does something with it someday because I can't get the family members to respond if they wanted to do anything with it. Some of the other stuff I've come up with, like, oh, the, what's the church up by Larry's? No.
Ashwick.
Ashwick Church, yep. So technically that church, I mean, there again, there's no way they even have church in it anymore because it's not safe. When I sent the information to Larry and Charlotte Gabriel, because they kind of do that, they never returned it because technically they're kind of in agreement, it's no longer used. If they do a service there, they do it outside in the middle of the parking lot. So there's that. There's the old hall, which is already pretty much reverted back to the landowner. But right across the road from that church is what is called, I believe it's like Farmer's Union Group. And I have not figured out who that is for sure. But I, it's used for nothing, so I don't know why it's still there. Unless there used to be, but it looks like they hate it, so there can't be a cemetery there.
Is that on Dale Peasor's?
It's right on the other side of the church to the.
Don't help me with that.
To the south.
South of the church would be?
I think it's Larry, isn't it? Because they did a hall sit on Larry's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hall does, I don't know about the church though.
The church sits in the middle of the road.
I thought south there did that, but there's a Mrs. Peterson, but they're not very far.
Mile.
Yep. But like I said, there's just models like that that we need to figure out where they go. They said somebody thought about trying to fix this church up, but yeah, it's in pretty rough shape. I have another one.
I can say it's Larry.
That is an old cemetery that's up by Mike and Linda Gevis's.
Yeah.
But now according to Kathy, she said everything's been, or is moved out of there, but there is still a headstone. But unless it's drawn wrong in my maps, it looks to me like it's used as a hay corral for right now. So there again, it's just one, I don't know whether downward road is one that should come out.
Yeah, the hay corral's kind of like right at one side of it.
On the south side?
Yeah, so that's what I'm wondering is if maybe in my map it's not drawn in there correctly.
Because there's still.
Kind of. Kind of a fence there, two of them has fallen down, but there's kind of a fence there.
I sent some inquiries to the school, because I have quite a few parcels that still say they're schools. And there's one out by Chuck O'Conners, there's one out by, off Otama Road by Dean Heves. It says like five acres is a school, but there's no buildings there, there's no nothing there.
So Chuck O'Conners, though, we've been on, that's been on Bill's estate. Right next to the old house, it's hard to say it was a state.
It's hard to tell with that, I mean, we have that chunk.
Yeah, but like I said, it's just.
Well, Bill had one. Yeah.
He's probably gonna say that's clear.
Right next to the house.
It's clear by the corner right before you turn into Chuck's. Is where this is located. That's where it's located. When you turn around the corner to, just where you turn into Chuck's place, it's out in the middle of his pasture. Went on ITIS, that's where it teaches.
That one at the hall.
Yeah.
Oh, and Howard used to teach at the one that was right down by the house.
Yep.
But that one's still there.
Let's see, the Harding Grove Church, they have a lot that sits in behind them, kind of by the county lot, the fire department, whatever. Mr. Parsons came in and said they're going to sell that to Prodigy's, so that took care of that one. Of course, they gained fishing parks, a lot of their land went back on because it shouldn't be back on. They said it should have never been, so we got that one taken care of. I have one called the Mary had a school, that's one of the ones that I just.
Well, it was south of Jedders, but it, you know, it got moved and then, oh, I think they.
But it's still like a three acre tract that's on the tax exempt list that probably should be taken care of or some dead locals. A lot of those used to come to get. And some of them, they just quit sending the information to. I also have one out by Annie Reedies that's called the St. Teresa's Church. And she said there's rocks there and so did Mary Hay. You can see where the building used to sit. It's by a tree just before you turn into Dwight Slavik's, but it's on the west side of the road. And she said that building was actually moved over to Gabriel's to, I think Jeff's, because she said it was Mrs. Peterson's. They used it as a cape ship. I'm guessing.
That's about hilarious.
Yeah, and I don't even know if it's anything left of it, but like I said, it's a piece of land that's platted out that should probably revert back to the old. So there's one, a little ones like that that I've been looking into. I have one out north of Otama. A guy called me about, because he was researching this Larry Quick. And he was looking for maps and townsfolk and I thought, oh, that's pretty funny because they actually have a pieces called maps and townsfolk. But according to Sandy, I believe this one is actually a cemetery, so. That one I would say the.
Out north, yeah.
Yeah, I have one up north beside the vet clinic that was.
Just what we could get the van.
It was put into, at some time, it's an exempt, it belonged to Lakota Communication Incorporated. There was supposed to be.
Or that tower?
But the tower doesn't sit on the lot, the tower sits to the north of it. But it sits like from here to those cars, north of the platted part. But I don't know why it once they, they weren't using it anymore, because it was, it used to be taxed and then it became exempt. So that one, I sent them a letter letting them know it would go back on the tax roll.
I didn't realize, I heard it once, but I didn't realize they weren't using it.
Yeah, well, the tower don't sit on that, so.
Yeah.
And that tower is like, that shade and falling down. Philip Charities bought the lot up beside like Mrs. Nelson's house, put the basement of the house up there. And that one, because they weren't done deciding what they were doing with it, they did get a valuation for it. But I would like to go ahead and make, exempt that house because they use it for their staff people to live in.
Rental.
Okay.
It's rental property. Who's that? The one the hospital moved out there.
Okay.
Next to where Marion died.
When the house sat down beside the hospital, it was exempt, that's why.
I don't know why it should have been exempt because it's a rental property.
Okay.
They're giving it to their people to use as part of their wages, so.
Oh, okay, well.
I don't, I don't think any of that should be competing because our rental property be off the tax.
Right. Okay. Okay. That's, and then this was the one by Chuck O'Conners. If you want to see where it sits. I think there's a map here of it. But like I said, I would like to, we'll work on trying to clean it up.
There's lots of schools.
And I sent those to the school asking them, because they thought everything was taken care of a long time ago.
That was sixty-eight at one time?
Well, the other one is, it's still on the tax roll, that shows in the county stuff that I was given, is the Bender School District, which is Enterprise School.
No, it's Uncle John's.
Well, if you go by this, it comes out.
That's not Bender's Uncle John's.
Okay. Because when I looked at it, it came out to where the Enterprise School sat, according to the legal.
It might have changed when they all switched and went back over there, I don't.
Okay, but anyways, because it says it's a one acre tract in the southwest quarter. And I was thinking that's, it looked out right there.
Of what?
Section twenty-nine.
Of which range?
Three twenty.
And be about right there.
Because now, there's still a lot of those places that are still fenced out that are kind of just, I mean, as far as tax exempt, some of that stuff probably doesn't really matter too much, but.
Usually what it does is it reverts back to the landowner, because they're no longer used. Which this one, actually, George and Sandy have already deeded to their son or son-in-law, so.
Right.
Obviously, it should be off the tax roll if that's the case.
Right, yes, I agree. But some of those, I think people leave them just because of part of history that, you know.
Well, and even like this.
It's five dollars, you know.
But even if it's, if it's not being used anymore and it's actually part of their business, it should be, that's what it should be.
Yeah, they can still leave a chance, but it should revert back into.
They should have paid that.
Five dollars.
The other one I did make a change on was the old church that sits.
It's clean shit.
On East Grinstone Road by Bob Thorson's. Because it's no longer used as a church, it's falling in, and that's the way the deed was. And I visited with Lauren Keel about it too, and he said, yes, that reverts back to Thorson's. So that one did revert back.
They'll get it done for all old timers.
You got those that are falling in.
Yeah. Otherwise, yeah, so like this one, this St. Teresa's Church, I'm gonna, that was the one that's out by Reedies and definitely that one. And then I'll just wait and do them next year, but that land will revert back into Annie's property. And then, I'll just wait and do them next year, but that land will revert back into, to Annie's property. Otherwise, I think that's about all I have for utilization stuff. That's everything I sent to the school, have them do that.
Is there also any more? I guess, thanks for getting through that little bit of the list. Just we, done, just all adjourned. It's part of the equation, and well, you can leave. If I need to do anything special, or just call it adjourned?
Call it adjourned.
Well, there again, like in Midland, rather than adjourning, it depends. Are you gonna wait till the end of the month, and then adjourn, adjourn?
Oh, with the director?
Because it says you're supposed to be open for so many days. Because why I'm asking is, because over there, what they did is they just recessed until that final meeting, and then they closed it then.
What's that, our next meeting? When is it done?
I think, isn't it the round the twenty-seventh, the end of this month?
The end of this month would be, yeah, I believe.
We had to reconvene?
Yeah, for some reason. But I don't know if there's any, I mean, it's too late for appeals, what else would you have?
Sure.
I just, I just recess. You can meet, three of you on the phone, and adjourn. You don't have to.
You guys all right, recessing?
For how long?
Well, the normal utilization is actually supposed to go for, what, two weeks? Or a week, or something like that, for the county. And then you're supposed to adjourn at the end of that, but, yeah, there too, if you have nothing else coming, I guess.
Yeah, it's up to them. I just didn't know if you had any other business. I have.
I don't believe so.
Well? Steve'd like to recess, and any other input, whether we recess or adjourn? Take motion on recess?
I'd make motion to recess.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to recess, is it to the twenty-seventh?
Should be in the book, wait, I was thinking that was something like that.
No, it's called that. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Hold the same sign. Motion carried.
Okay, I don't have anything for a regular, maybe town, like...
You opposed it, kid.
Okay.
Mike opposed.
Oh, okay.